Good evening, welcome to the school committee meeting of April 11th. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everybody and let you know that this meeting is being recorded on NCAM, so please silence your devices. Do we have any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will welcome our students for the student report.
Hello.
Hi, Jack. All right.
Um, so I want to start off with some good news from the choral department. Last Sunday, they competed at the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association's statewide competition at Westboro High School where all three choirs earned triple gold, or well, all three choirs earned gold medals for their outstanding performances. So the choir, choral department as a whole, earned triple gold. This is the second year in a row that this has happened, so it's a pretty awesome achievement for the chorus. It's pretty exciting to see that they've done this not just one year, but two years in a row. And since all three choruses won gold medals, they get to compete on Saturday, May 4th, at Symphony Hall in Boston where admission is, admission is free and open to the public. So that's a really cool experience that the choir students get to experience in two weeks' time. Also, I want to talk a little bit about the Ecuador and Galapagos trip that's happening right now. I've seen some pictures and it seems like a really awesome experience that's going on. So on Tuesday, North Andover High School students departed for Ecuador. They stopped in Panama City for a connector flight and some of the students got the opportunity to explore Panama City, I heard, a little bit. I heard some students got to practice their Spanish-speaking skills for those in the group that don't take Spanish and had to act as interpreters. So that's kind of funny that some students got to do that. After that, they ended up in Ecuador and they visited the equator, which is kind of cool. They, like, half of them were on, in the southern hemisphere and the other half in the northern hemisphere. So that was pretty cool, seeing pictures from that, too. In addition to these awesome, like, cultural experiences that the students are getting, they're also going to participate in service in Ecuador and the Galapagos, which is like a cool immersion, like, blend of culture meeting this service. So that's a cool opportunity that the students get to, get to experience. In addition, so yeah, transitioning, yesterday, the baseball team hosted a fundraiser through Ford, which is kind of an interesting fundraiser. I've never heard about any, anything like this before, where it was open to the public and people who were 18 or older could come to the high school fieldhouse and could test drive Ford vehicles. And per each vehicle test-driven, the Ford would donate $20 to the baseball team. So that's a really cool, like, different way to raise money that I didn't even know was an option, so that's pretty cool.
But not in the fieldhouse.
No, no, not in the fieldhouse, unfortunately, you know, but, um, yeah, that's pretty cool.
How many came to test drive?
What?
Do you know how many came to test drive?
I don't, I don't know, actually. I'm actually curious about that because that's an interesting fundraiser. If they don't do it, maybe as a class fundraiser for the juniors, but, you know.
Always thinking.
Yeah, always thinking. In addition to that going on yesterday, transitioning to today, actually, the Environmental Club hosted a school-wide cleanup for, where students in the Environmental Club invited any students from the high school who wanted to participate in a cleanup of the high school driveway, picking up any trash that's blown in or is in the woods or the grass by the driveway. So they all got, like, trash bags and gloves and really dug in for, students could stay as long as they want, wanted to. Some stayed, like, half an hour, an hour, like, however long they wanted to contribute. It's a really cool way to see people come together to do that and clean up our school. So that, that's a cool thing that happened today. In addition to that, junior prom ticket sales are going on right now. They'll be continuing through the Tuesday after April break. Tickets are $70 and they'll be on sale till after April break. Junior prom is, is Friday, May 3rd, at Castleton in Wyndham, New Hampshire. So we're really excited for that. We're planning it. It's going to be a really awesome event. And finally, there's also a senior, more senior-focused thing that's going on where they're having a contest for decorations for the SOS t-shirt designs. So students can submit, can submit their submissions for this contest to be, have their artwork or their design featured on the seniors' t-shirts for SOS in graduation. So, yeah, that's all I have for tonight, but, yeah.
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 Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, guys. Oh, yeah, April break.
Okay, moving on to our consent agenda and the approval of minutes from last meeting. I would like to read Helen's comment because she couldn't be here tonight. Bev took excellent notes, wow, commendable.
Thank you, Helen.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented in the packet from March 28th, 2019.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Mabey, second by Mr. Trizzi. Any discussion? I just wanted to point out, and we can approve it as amended, but in the comment, in the public comments section, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven paragraphs down, beginning with Jennifer Watson, cites is spelled incorrectly. Says cites MGL section, should be a C.
Oh, right.
And Bev said she would make that change.
Ten to merits for Ms. Zegary.
All right.
Aye.
I am in favor.
And aye, three, zero. Okay, our superintendent's report.
Okay, so I'm just going to do a brief overview of what we have today in the superintendent's report because it's action-packed, but in A, we're going to have Chief Gray come up and talk about the emergency preparedness and the work that they're doing with Andover and Lawrence next week at the North Andover Middle School. So he's up first. Secondly, we have Mr. Nugent, Principal Jackson, and the director of SEL, Nikki Murphy, here tonight to talk about the coalition forming at the high school, as well as community partnerships, to raise awareness, prevention, and education in response to programming around healthy relationships and sexual assault awareness. Then we have number C, letter C. We have Ms. Tompkins and Mr. Delmonico from the middle school and high school, and they're going to be giving us an update on art, which is, they got to go to the national conference. And I've been known to steal people's thunder, so I'm gonna just stick to
Thank you.
this piece, so. And then last but not least, Ms. Marx is going to go over the early release calendar, and she'll take us through that. And I just had one bit of exciting news that I did want to share from Cheryl Barzacak, that just hot off the press, that she's worked really hard with the nursing staff to work on a grant for the funding of a comprehensive school health service program, to implement a comprehensive interdisciplinary approach to student health in order to address school-based health prevention and promotions, substance abuse, reproductive health, oral health, support for students with chronic health conditions such as asthma, diabetes, life-threatening allergies, as well as address health disparities and racial inequalities, poverty, homelessness, access to care, et cetera, in order to improve student attendance and academic achievement in the schools. And it looks, at this time, and I just got this, that it's probably about $80,000 a year to do so, and it appears at this time it'll probably run for about five years. So really, kudos to the nurses, and particularly Cheryl Barzacak. She's done an amazing job over the years with the grants, so. With that being said, I'd like to welcome up Chief Gray.
Dr. Gilligan asked me to come before you and speak about our upcoming training we're having at the middle school during the week of vacation. As many as you know, after Sandy Hook in 2011, we really started taking a look at our school safety training, and it started out with just the North Andover Police Department. And back then, Dr. Gilligan was involved at the high school level and assisted us. And I have to say, first of all, out of the gate, that the relationship the PD and the FD have with the, the schools now is the best it's ever been because of Dr. Gilligan. The training is going to take place next week. We're going to be working with a couple of the agencies that we have a little bit of familiarity with, Andover and Lawrence. We're going to have Lawrence Police, Lawrence Fire, Andover Police, and Lawrence General Hospital on scene. What it is, is an active shooter-type event. It's the lawful but awful things that we have to do. We don't like talking about it, but unfortunately, we have to train for it. So when people drive by next week, they're going to see a lot of police cars, a lot of fire trucks, paramedics, and a lot of people, you know, involved in this exercise. And what it is, is we're involving not just police, but we're involving the medical side of getting people out of the building, whether they're hurt or not, getting people to a safe area. And again, like I said, it's the lawful but awful stuff that we have to do. So we're looking forward to it. Through Dr. Gilligan's assistance, we have the, the middle school campus, and we actually invited our staff to attend, to actually take part. Principal Jackson's been an active member in the exercises over the years, and it really gives the staff a real good grasp on what actually happens on those events, and gives them the training they need, that if something ever happens, they have their leadership abilities to stand up and say, this is what's going to happen. So we're looking forward to it.
Does your whole staff participate in that?
The whole staff. It's, it's mandatory training. I know Chief Vask, in the past, we've trained at Lucent. We're actually doing it in a school now, and Andover PD Chief Keefe is also having his officers do it.
I know that Chief Gray cycles offices through, throughout the course of the year, in the evenings and different things, to every school, to get a lay of the land and do some of their training. But could you talk, just so that no one's nervous on Friday about what's taking place? Because Monday through Thursday, it sounds like you'll be in the building quite a bit.
Correct. And Friday is what's called a mass casualty incident. That's where we're going to actually have a lot of ambulances, and we're actually going to transport people to Lawrence General Hospital to give the doctors and nurses and staff there indication of what it's going to be like to train a mass casualty, a lot of people coming up in a short amount of time, and how they're going to handle their response at the hospital. So it's training for everyone across the board, from emergency personnel and staff inside the building.
So, I assume that that's, it's close to the public, but are you inviting the press to observe and do a story on it? Because I think it's really important for the public to know what's going on there, so we don't get a bunch of calls and emails.
Right. We actually had, the press was sent, we're going to be sending a release probably tomorrow, I think, Dr. Gilligan, if we have that finalized. But I know that in the past, when we trained with Lawrence, I know Chief Vask actually sent it out to the, the Spanish-speaking press, and we got a really good response because this isn't just training for North Andover schools, it's training for every agency around here to let the parents know their kids are safe, whether it's Lawrence, Andover, North Andover, Methuen, Haverhill, whatnot. We're all in the same business and we're all here to make sure we save as many kids as we can. So by sending it out to as many people in the press as we can, we've actually reached a lot more people the last time, and, like I said, the Spanish-speaking community especially, which was really good.
Can I ask one question about, I know that Alice Training has now been in place for a couple of years, and I know that other people kind of run that part, but have you heard much about, are the students getting even better and better at participating in that, or any feedback on that?
Much better. And we started this, I started when I was detective lieutenant, five, six years ago. Since then, Lieutenant Folds, who took over, has knocked it out of the park.
Right.
And by training the kids at a young, young level, at the elementary level, they're taking that life skill with them through middle, through high school, and out into the real world where this is, you know, this technique is used everywhere.
Thank you.
So I do know the police have a press release to go out, but I'll be also sending a copy of that to all the parents in North Andover tomorrow.
Right. Yep.
Thanks, chief.
Good to go. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to welcome up Director of Guidance, Steve Nugent, Director of Social Emotional Learning, Nikki Murphy, and High School Principal, Chat Jackson. For the people at home.
Exactly. Good evening, thank you for having us speak. Dr. Gilligan asked us to speak briefly about the work we've been doing over the past about month, I would say, together with support from central office staff. Steve and I have been focused on it, but obviously Chat Jackson's been very helpful as well.
Excuse me, could you just pick up a little bit? I can't hear.
Can't hear, is this, should I put it closer?
Villages with the TV.
Oh, okay. Sure, sorry. So we have been reaching out to various organizations to partner, to form a student-led coalition, with the purpose being to address and increase education and awareness around sexual assaults, relational violence, and various forms of abuse. And we have partnered with the YWCA that has a department that is focused specifically on this. And what we're going to do is, we've already scheduled a parent night. We just got the specific evening scheduled, so we haven't publicized it yet, but it's going to be on May 16th. And they will come and speak to parents, and the purpose is really to help educate people about various forms of abuse. They'll also talk about if your child is showing any kind of, you know, different signs of abuse, what that looks like, and in addition, how to help your child by responding the appropriate way if they do disclose to you that they've been abused or assaulted in some way, as well as connecting them to various support systems in the community. Additionally, we have the first coalition meeting scheduled for students, and also involves various community members, and that's scheduled for April 25th. So that's the beginning of that work. The mission, obviously, again, is to increase education awareness, to promote healthy relationship skills among students in the high school. And feel free to add anything, if either, if you want to.
What time is that meeting on the 25th?
On the 25th, it's from 1:00 to 2:00. It's at the high school. We don't have the room location yet determined, but that will be the time for the first meeting. And then at that meeting, we'll gather the students, the community members that are involved, and come up with the mission and the agenda, but we obviously have an overall mission and vision that we want to increase awareness and education and promote, like I said, healthy skills.
Thank you for organizing that.
Sure.
I wonder, how are you identifying the community members and the students and things like that? What's the, do you have a process, or?
I'll take the student part. So I think, so Nikki and I crafted an email over the weekend, that went out on Monday. So we, we invited any student member, any member of the student body at the school right now to respond. We're hoping to end up with four to eight, depending on, you know, one, one or two students per grade level to be part of the committee. So based on the number of responses we get, we gave them until Friday to get back to us, so we've got one more day, and then we'll figure out how to go from there. And then as far as some of the members of the community, whether it was the youth center...
Deanna Cruz from the town. So we tried to pick some people that we felt would be able to lend various areas of expertise. So obviously, Deanna Cruz, myself and Steve, of course, in our roles in the school system. Helen is going to sit on the committee as well. Cheryl Barzacak from nursing, Director of Nursing. And I believe that's who we have so far, and Steve mentioned the youth center. So we tried to look at different organizations within the community that have the area of expertise and also can help us with guiding the students to support them and educate them.
Thank you.
And there'll also be a couple of parents on the committee, too, correct?
Correct, yes.
So these, putting this together, these folks, I think, you know, with some of the inspiring young ladies who were, worked with Mr. Jackson on the walkout, et cetera, to raise awareness, support, they really came up with some good ideas about different perspectives so that folks can work together to raise awareness, prevention, education, where are the resources needed, you know, not just in schools, not just in North Andover, but navigate a world where you're going to need those skills.
And another great thing about the YWCA is we're starting with a parent night, but they also provide training for staff to support students, and then they provide training and education for students as well. So when we meet with the coalition, that will be part of, of a broader plan that we devise to hopefully, like I said, increase education and awareness and feel like all groups that have been, you know, can be affected by sexual assault and relational violence will have an opportunity to get some education and support.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, from the art department. You know, for ye, well, we're going to let those art teachers get their materials, I think. Yes, I've been in your room, Tony, quite a bit. You know, over the years, we've had several elementary presentations, math presentations, ELA presentations, reading, writing, Lucy Cockins. You know, we've had different groups from the high school come in, middle school, and Lorraine and I were talking the other day, and we said, you know what, we've never had the art folks in. So we're pretty excited because, and I'll let Lorraine kind of give the intro now. Go ahead, Lorraine.
Looks like you brought dinner, too.
It looks that way.
But it tastes so well.
I think one of the driving forces behind it was, it was the National Conference for Art Teachers in Boston this March, and Tony had emailed me in the fall asking if I would be able to support him going, and I looked it up and it looked like a really valuable opportunity. So it was offered to any art teacher in the district, from kindergarten all the way up through 12th grade, and most of the art teachers went, and the feedback has been really positive. So we thought it would be a great opportunity for some of the art teachers to talk a little bit about that and a little bit about how they may carry some of that over into their teaching and what they're doing in their classrooms. So thank you.
Thanks for having us.
So I guess I'll start first, and then Tony was going to show you some things of how we grow through the high school process. So my name is Sarah Tompkins. I'm the art teacher at, one of the art teachers at the middle school, grade six through eight, and I also teach an adaptive art class for our kids in the RISE program. And in our class, we have a kind of a set curriculum. It's something that they get a taste and they try on different projects. It expands off the elementary curriculum, where students work in like a smaller scale, maybe they do one project a week, where this is like a longer project, where they plan things out, it's, try to incorporate some of the things of STEAM and things like that. So, so the kids really enjoy trying out different materials. This is just to get like a little taste of what they're doing. This is a scratchwork project that the students worked on, and just try out things that they may not have experienced before in the elementary level. We also start to think about what we've made. We talk about what we've reflected on what we've made in class, using 21st century learning skills. So it's almost like playing a sport where they've made something now, and the coach gathers everyone together and says, well, what did you think about what you made? And assessing students' learning, I have this flyer outside my classroom door, and it's like, how would you assess how you learned? It's a four, three, two, one kind of scale, and just having students show each other how to build off what they've made. So it's a community kind of classroom. We also love to have other faculty members come into the classroom. So a lot of the academic teachers will come in during their prep periods and see students working, sit down with them, ask them what they're making, work with them. So it kind of developed this come-visit-our-studio kind of a mentality in the classroom, too. So, and students continue to develop skills, build off what they've made in all different grade levels. This is a seventh-grade project with pointillism, so. And then giving students opportunities to build skills builders for high school, entering drawing one, drawing two, relearning opportunities are really something we've worked on at the middle school level, so making a practice version of something and then building on top of that with checklists, and, and maybe you didn't get it the first time around, didn't gain that opportunity to do that again, so. We've also, I worked a lot, really hard with Ms. Rivera, and Ms. Brady, and Ms. Flaherty, and all the elementary art teachers, giving students opportunities to make art outside of the classroom. So this is two examples that we've did this year. Ms. Brady and Ms. Rivera love doing Google for Doodle in their classrooms. They sent out a bunch of artwork, and this was an Inktober drawing exercise where they gave you a prompt, and then students would, for 30 days, practice drawing. So that was something that we did in the classroom, too. So this is the conference. This is the second time that I have gone to the conference, but many of my peers have never gone before.
First time.
Yeah. And it was in Boston this year, which was wonderful, because we have such great resources here with colleges and professors. And so not only, the conference is almost set up like our ed camp that we do here in the district, and so a lot of the things you sign up for and see, this is actually the National Art Education Association book that has all the different programs and things you could go through each day. There was also a handy app that helped us a lot. But we, we were able to see some really great keynote speakers, which I'll, I'll speak to in a minute, and it was just an amazing thing. It's the largest conference of art teachers in the world. So it's not just the national conference, really. There's teachers from Korea, China, like, all over the world, so. We had to see Howard Gardner speak. He does the multiple intelligences series. He's actually a sociologist, but his wife is one of my favorite art educators. Her name is Ellen Whining, and she developed the Studio Habits of Mind, which is something that we all use in our classroom. And he is a Harvard professor. He started Project Zero, which is a thought process of how we all learn and how we think about the way that students learn. So he was talking about Duckworth's grit and wit, and how some students should expand upon that in the arts. He did a lot of discussions about how some students should implement their grit in certain directions rather than others, so he was a really great speaker to listen to and see. This is Amy Sherald. She was hired by the National Portrait Gallery to do the portrait of Michelle Obama, and she was the opening speaker at the conference. She is the first African-American woman to be hired to do a portrait of a first lady, and she talked a lot about how her art experiences in education led to her developing into the artist that she is today. And we had some school art magazines, I'll pass this around. She's on the cover, her work for that, so. So what did we get from the conference? A ton of notes, a ton of materials to try out with students. The first day back, I just gave out all the materials that I had and had students just play with them and try them out. The conference was a really great experience for me. I got to go to a dinner with some professors from Mass Art and made some really great connections with artists and professors across the country. I met two of these art artists who are from the University of Minnesota, and they gave me this book to give, to show my students about journaling and sketchbooks, and that was really amazing. Peter Reynolds is an elementary art artist, art teacher, and he's an illustrator. Him and Him and his brother have developed a Fable Vision, which is a art teacher platform for other art teachers to work together. And he did a talk about students. I was able to sit with Med Rivera and talk about autism and how to teach students with autism. I'd never been to any kind of professional development before, where it's just teaching art for autistic students and in our RISE program. So that was something that was really amazing for me. And then a lot of things about assessment, and a lot about how do students develop their own unique processes? Or is it, you know, being compliant to what the teacher's asking? Or is it how a student should come up with their own criteria for art projects? At the high school level, I think Toni could tell you that the kids kind of come up with what they think they want their projects to look like, and maybe they're coming up with the criteria to what it should be assessed on. And a lot of things about the new standards that are coming out for art and music. And, you know, how do they, they're creating rubrics now that instead of having areas where it says what's not excellent or not good, coming up with what makes a student want to meet a criteria or a standard, so. One of the most influential, powerful presentations I went to was Sherri Lloyd. She's an art teacher, a middle school art teacher in Washington. And almost all of her students are in a social-emotional learning setting. And I've learned so much from Nikki Murphy this year and being part of the RISE Committee at NAMS. And when she, when she spoke to me about trauma-informed classrooms and being compassionate and the ACE system, she said that most of her students have had dysfunctional households. And how do you reach out to students in the arts and the visual arts for that? So that was something that was really powerful for me, and I really took a lot from. So this is also, we had a visiting artist come to NAMS. His name is Jesse "The Machine" Green, and he made a sculpture for our main lobby. If you haven't had a chance to see it, you can go over there. He's in Medford, and he's been at a couple of other schools in the area. He came to Wakefield High School and did their mascot as well. And Derek Walsh is a science teacher at the middle school as well, and he went to college with Jesse Green. So he was able to contact him, and it's something we worked on. The students loved having him here. One of the most important things that he mentioned to students is that he tried a lot and he failed a lot. And they really talked about that. He talked about how his own mental experiences. He wasn't like star student. He, he didn't know what he was going to do, and how did he find his niche in the community? And then what he does. He has a show on the National Geographic Channel where he makes chainsaw sculptures for people. His whole family's involved, and he's continuing to expand and help other people follow their dreams, so. This year, we have an upcoming art show. It's the third annual Fine and Performing Arts Night. So we do, the jazz band performs, some of the acting students, and we collaborate with the Stevens Memorial Library on that day. So some of the work that the students will showcase was from all the third trimester. I think Toni's going to talk to you more about some ideas that the art departments have to incorporate more chances for students to showcase their artwork. I know we just had at the youth center, the merchant example of merchant things. Expo, yes, thank you. And they, the kids really loved that, and they were really excited and pumped for that. So I hope that continues in the community. So there's a flyer for that. And in the past, we've hung up artwork as well as done acting. Ms. Bate at the library also does spine poetry, so should we incorporate some of that as well?
Toni Delmonico, again, thanks for having us here. My portion of the presentation is slides of just student perceptions of what it's like being a student at the high school in a ceramics class. So while I kind of talk about what I got at the conferences and how I'm kind of applying it to my own curriculum, there's just images of kids in the class and quotes on their interpretations of what they're doing. So I've been at the high school 13 years, and in that time, I've really been pushing myself to develop a curriculum that explores creativity, bringing the artist out from within each student. It's something that was very much touched upon at the conference. So it was exciting to hear and see and meet colleagues from around the world who are exploring such topics. It crosses over into the use of writing in the classroom as a way of unleashing student voice, exploring concepts of identity, who am I in this world? Collaboration. So it's, it's been a really fun and interesting experience to work with students at talking about things like childhood memories and then applying it to a work of art. Or thinking about the concept of home and then building a structure that depicts that. Each project is accompanied with a writing portion where the students explore through either narrative writing or analytical writing what they're planning on doing for a project and then reflecting upon it. One of the things I've always really enjoyed about working in the ceramics studio is the collaborative, natural, relaxed environment that it brings. Classes such as drawing are often difficult for students who have not had success in prior art classes. Pottery is a much more disarming, welcoming way for students to not only create, but to do so in a way where they can see their colleagues' work and they can respond and talk about it. So the use of writing and bringing in the student experience has just helped to facilitate that positive work environment. The work itself has improved as a result. I feel like students can see a purpose to making art as opposed to just kind of following technical guidelines and whatnot. So it's an ongoing process. I'm kind of doing a thesis on it right now, too. Be happy to share with you the results of that next year. But in regards to the art show and exploring different ways of presenting student work, I've recently reached out to students at Lawrence, or teachers at Lawrence High School, Andover High School, and doing a collaborative art show. So as it stands right now, it's slated to be in February of next year. We found a space, the Lawrence Heritage State Park has agreed to host it. I've worked with them in the past through the GLEC program when that was here, well, when that was anywhere, really. It's dissolved now. And me and the other teachers are just really excited about reinvigorating the communal aspects of making art and sharing it. We're putting together committees of students at each school who will then collaborate with each other at their prospective schools to come up with themes for the art show every year so that the work is really catered under a central idea. I mean, much like what you would see at an art gallery or a museum. So really looking forward to that, and that's about it.
Yeah, we also got the opportunity to talk to the professors at Montserrat, and they have a faculty show, which is something that, yep. Mr. Delmonico and Ms. Senna were both in. Ms. Senna actually got an award at the show, so. Best in show, so that we talked about doing collaboration with them as well, because they're right there in Beverly. So reaching out to the community and building some more ties to the arts is something that we're really striving to do.
Oh, and I almost forgot. The Jazz Night at the high school that's coming up later this month is also going to host AP student artwork from our visual arts department. So be an interesting way to kind of see the students, the 12, I think, students who are in that program and how they've developed voice through their art. And then our general high school show is June 14. We just made that yesterday, so.
And some middle school students will choose to showcase work at the high school show, too. They've done that in the past.
Oh.
Yeah. So any questions for us?
What do you have there?
So you don't know, right? These are examples of a project I developed at the end of last year on exploring identity through food. So students are asked to think about their relationship with food, what would be considered their celebratory meal. So it's a kind of very easygoing conversation to start in the classroom. Students talking to each other about food, who doesn't love food? So they can choose between kind of exploring a favorite restaurant or a recipe that has passed down from generation to generation, or a special occasion, like a birthday or family celebration, reunion. And they make it, and then in the reflection portion, students are asked to use the art object that they've made to write a reflective analysis on how it really reflects on who they are as a person. And they share that during their final presentations as a way of kind of deepening the learning experience through a personal, personal sharing moment, you know? So it's, it's been pretty exciting. These are just some examples of it. The one on the end, Connor Durkin, it's his mother's meal that she has found. Everyone in his family will actually agree upon eating. So for his assignment, he was asked to interview his mom about what it was like finding that meal, what goes into it, and in terms of ingredients, there's like a little bit of the whole family in it. So in itself, kind of becomes as an art object, not just a meal, but more or less a family portrait. Next up, Yasmina Burlow explored a tradition she has on collaborative days with her friends, where they go to China Blossom and they get takeout, and they just kind of be girls, talking at a table for a few hours and having fun. Chick-fil-A opened in Methuen. And then a student who explored her own cultural identity through food. So really always interesting and diverse and unique results, but again, kind of speaking to connecting the students' own experience through art.
That's a really great idea.
Thanks, thanks.
It feels like a far stretch from when you, when I was a kid, a million years ago, and had to take art, and you felt like you were doing it wrong or not doing it right. And you touched on the fact that there's an artist in everyone, and that's great.
It's great to see the transition from elementary to middle and then see these works in high school, too, so.
Beautiful.
For all of us in our departments.
Is this what some of the restaurants do? So I looked at the theater at AMC, and I was, the pretzel looked great. And I said, I'll take that pretzel. But I found out that that wasn't a real pretzel.
There's a whole industry in making fake food, yeah.
They're beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Also thankful to the students for letting you carry them out of the building.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, well, they trust me with it.
It's great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, this was excellent.
Oh, yeah. And we have Ms. Marx up next with the school calendar, which has been voted on in the early release days. And I think just a couple of components, I think we started with 21 a few years back, and we're now at 17 already.
Eighteen, eighteen this coming year. So just a quick review. So we have assigned the early release days for our professional development next year. And there are two in every month that we have school, with the exception of December and June. In December and June, there are only one release, there's only one release day, which gives us the 18 total.
Do you mean November and June?
Yeah, December shows, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, must be November. I'm sorry, thank you. I have December down here. And we worked to not have any early release days on any week that also had a day out. So we tried to schedule that. We do have a couple that do fall before or after a school vacation, but they were unavoidable. If we could, if we could move days, we did. So we tried to really be cognizant of trying to get full weeks in. We do have an early release day on October, in October for Yom Kippur, which was an agreement that was made a couple of years ago. We have full professional development days in August. So we have August 27th for new teachers, and then the 28th and 29th for all staff, and November 5th and January 20th, which are similar to what we've had in past years. And we do have our kindergarten start date as Thursday, September 5th, and we are working with Mary Lou Connors and the new principal to look at how the orientation is going to happen the days before the official start date. So that is an update on the calendar.
Isn't historically, though, have we had the first day of school for K and pre-K the day, just the day after? Is there a reason we're pushing out another day?
So historically, over time, it has started typically for many, many years on the Friday of that week of Labor Day. So over time, we had worked our way back towards the opening day of school. But when you talk about lessons learned, we want to have the ability to get 345 five-year-olds who are learning their names, et cetera, in for a very detailed orientation where we can then, you know, we're not exactly sure what it's going to look like because we just hired Tiffany Goddard from Lawrence, and we're really excited about her. But looking at how do we best orient folks? So probably maybe half the school on one day, half on the other, but it's still in the works.
And obviously, they don't have any kind of 180-day requirement, right?
No, they don't.
Okay.
I just have a couple of notes from Helen to share. She said she did have communication from some community members regarding the early release days. One person said that twice a month is a hardship on families. One person said that having the professional development on Yom Kippur gives the message that the professional development is of little or no value, and that learning and contributions of those excluded is not valued by the community. She said there are five Wednesdays in October, it might be worth a conversation. And then she said it would be of interest to her to know the activities for building-based PD. We often hear about the planned outcomes for district-based PD, but not for days organized by principals at the building level. So that's her feedback. And this is just, we're not voting on, we're not voting on this tonight, right?
You don't vote on this.
Right, we don't vote on it, oh, that's right, okay. Okay.
Well, just in relation, so Lorraine, you had said that the previous agreement had been that Yom Kippur was a good day for this, but then Helen says she's had feedback that a couple of teachers did not like that. So do you have any idea what the?
She didn't say teachers. She just said person, so it could have been a parent.
A person, okay.
Yeah, so I do know that my predecessor, Jen Price, had met, I think, the last few years, possibly with the rabbi from Andover and some of the families. And they had talked about having the one hour and 15-minute early release when it fell on a Wednesday so that those kids would miss their school that are going to be up for the religious holiday.
That was my understanding, too, at the time. That was a couple of years ago. Yeah.
Yeah. So last year, though, it fell on the day that typically school districts give off if they, if they recognize a religious holiday. And this year, it's not, it would be on that second day, Yom Kippa, as far as I know.
It is the second day, yes.
Okay. I appreciate that it's, I know you've done this the last several years, that it's fairly consistent. It's not like it's here and there, it's pretty consistent every other, so people can plan for that, so appreciate that.
It is helpful, having it be every other week.
Yeah, rather than kind of haphazard.
Two random days during the month, yeah.
Yeah, Dr. Hutchinson's first year, we learned quite a bit from that.
Yeah, I remember that.
Any other discussion on that?
Thank you.
Okay, for the chair's report, I have three items. First, I would like to mention that both Helen Picard and Andrew McDevitt are traveling tonight. Helen is on vacation, a long-ago-planned vacation with her husband. And Mr. McDevitt is traveling for work, so that is why they are not here. Nikki mentioned earlier about the coalition and the community members that are involved, and she mentioned Helen. We do have a school committee member representative on that committee, and that is Helen, as she already mentioned. And then third, And then third, we mentioned at our last meeting, the independent review that's being done at the high school. And we are hoping that we will have a report after break, and we will share it with the community. So we'll make that public. And we're looking forward to those findings and recommendations. Now, sorry, I had four things. And then fourth, the town manager search committee update. We've had two meetings so far, and the one recent, the first one was basically just looking at the timeline. So the plan now is to have selectmen interview and vote the same night on, at their meeting on June 24th. So leading up to that, yeah, it feels stretched out, but we have, the posting right now is open until the end of this month. And then there's time to collect and review, screen the candidates, and then they're going to choose a number of candidates, I'm not sure how many, to do an essay, and there'll be time to complete the essay. And then we'll be, we'll do interviews probably June 20th, I think, is when we're scheduled to have all the interviews done one day. It's going to be a long day for me, because we have a school committee that night as well. So that was the first meeting. And then last night's meeting, we went over the criteria that we're looking for, and trying to formulate what question, we're not at the question stage yet, what questions we're going to ask, but we're basically looking at what we think is important for a town manager, and we put our heads together to come up with some qualities that we would like to see. There were two public meetings in that time between two, where the community was allowed to come in and give their feedback, or what they're looking for in a town manager. And I actually do not know how those went, we didn't get to that last night.
So, the search committee, there's five in the search committee.
Yes.
Would you see all the resumes, and you five would have looked down?
Yes.
Okay, so the consultant?
They're going to make their recommendations, but we've made it clear to them that we would like to see all the resumes. They could certainly give input, but that's our call.
Is there, is there a magic number, or requested number from the selectmen of how many resumes, or how many finalists they want us to put forward?
Two to four.
Two to four.
And then you're saying that they would then interview the two to four?
In one night.
All in one night.
Correct.
Is there rationale for that? Are they trying to hit a certain deadline, or?
I actually don't know if there's a rationale for that.
Seems hard to do.
I just learned last night that they're voting the same night they're interviewing.
Okay.
I, it may be, we talked in the first meeting, it may be because if there are any out-of-town candidates, they would want them to spend a day here, and just not have to come back and forth between. So that's why it's a compressed timeline. So we're interviewing on Thursday, and their final interview will be on a Monday. So they wouldn't have to travel back and forth, they could stay the weekend.
And maybe they don't know yet, do they have any ideas of, we have people do tasks and things like that, and visit the district, blah, blah, blah. Will they have, do you have any idea if they're going to?
I don't know that yet, we're not there yet.
That's interesting, okay.
Sure, any other questions?
No, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, no problem.
Very important.
All right, old business. We have second reading approval of the FY '20 revolving accounts and fees.
Something has changed on this history. Reminder that Andrew McDevitt had asked us to hold off on the athletic revolving account and approve the others. And he indicated he didn't have any concerns about the other ones. Just given the work of this subcommittee, he just wants to hold off on the athletics, and that's fine for us to do.
Do you have any idea where they are in their process, like how much longer?
I'm not, I'm part of that subcommittee, actually. We're deep into it, I'm not sure how much longer it will be.
Okay.
Yep.
Very detailed.
But otherwise, there are no increases recommended anywhere else?
No, no recommendations for any increases in fees or costs, so food services, community programs, transportation, and athletic fees, right now.
Is there a subcommittee you don't sit on, Jim?
I can't find one yet.
So is the motion to approve these revolving accounts except for the nine athletic department ones?
Except for the single athletic department one. So it's just that the account itself.
It's that concept.
Right, so it's approve the revolving account budgets as presented, except for athletic revolving account.
I'll make a motion as such.
Oh, second.
Motion by Mr. Treese, second by Ms. Mably, any discussion?
Any votes?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. Okay, next up, reading and approval of the request for transfer of funds from the Special Education Stabilization Fund to the school department budget.
So, again, this is a logistic necessity in that the school committee actually has to request the funds from the Special Education Stabilization Fund. As you know, we have a need for the $250,000 from the fund this year, so we need the approval tonight in order for that to go forward.
And that goes forward at town meeting in there?
Correct, right. And just as a reminder, it's part, they go out-of-town meeting into a special town meeting in order to do that business.
All right, I'll move that the school committee approve the transfer of $250,000 from the Special Education Stabilization Fund into the school department's operating budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Treese, seconded by Ms. Mably.
Aye.
Aye.
Now FY '20 town meeting warrant article recommendations.
So, we still have time to have it printed. It's gone out to the printer, but we can have included the school committee positions on the five articles. The first two are special town meeting articles, the one we just voted on. So, we would anticipate school committee recommendation, yes.
These are last year's, aren't they?
This is for this year.
Oh, I see, I see.
It says FY 2019. Says 2019.
Yeah, they'll have to change that.
That's what I meant, yeah.
And so, yes, we would need to vote on one and two, our special town meeting. One is the Special Education Stabilization Fund. Two is the Medicaid reimbursement fund. And that's more going to be of a logistic, the mechanics of the funds. We originally thought it was just going to be an existing kind of revolving account, that the money would go in and we'd be able to use up to whatever the limit was for that year, as long as the money was in there. It doesn't work out quite that way mechanically. So this is what Lynn Savage has come up with regarding the second article. So we would certainly recommend school committee favorable action on that one. And then three, four, and five were discussed last week. So if the school committee decides it does want to be in the book with a position, could do so on those three tonight.
Well, we could be in the book with what you have here, recommendation to the town meeting, we can leave it like that.
Or it could say favorable.
It was safe, correct.
Yep.
Correct.
Madam Chair, do you want to take one of these one at a time?
I think it makes sense to do them one at a time.
I had a question, since we didn't see one and two until now, do we have to vote to suspend the rules, to vote on these tonight?
We've, we have it under old business as far as the action towards the warrant articles.
Okay, so it can fall under that?
Yes.
And this is something we do quite frequently, so.
Yes.
I'll move that the school committee recommend favorable action on article one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Treese, seconded by Ms. Mably, any discussion?
Nope.
Aye.
Aye.
And aye.
Madam Chair, I'll move that the school committee recommend favorable action on article two.
Oh, second.
Motion by Mr. Treese, seconded by Ms. Mably.
So I just want to make sure I understand, this is?
So the reason, I just, now that I'm thinking about it, this is correct. This is for this year, FY 19.
That's what I thought.
These two are.
These two are, okay.
Yes.
Oh, because it's the current year.
Right, right, right. That's right.
Yep.
I still move favorable action.
But then this is the money that the town voted on last year to increase to this number.
To go from 250 to, right.
Okay.
All right, so we have the motion.
Yeah.
We have the second.
Yep.
So.
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. Okay. These three we can do together, right, or no?
Let's just do them.
Do them separately, okay.
I'll move favorable action on article three.
I thought you were doing them all together.
No, we're doing them separately.
Okay. I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Treese, seconded by Ms. Mably, any discussion?
I'd rather wait, since the other two people aren't here.
So Helen did give me her input on this, and she would rather vote tonight rather than at the meeting, and she's in support of all three.
Yeah, there's nothing to shatter on here. I'm okay voting out.
All right. I mean, there's nothing odd about it. I think it's good that we never were on it before, I think it's good that it's been added, especially when there are superintendents.
Yep, they have to do schools, yeah.
At town meeting, the moderator just bundles these in.
And a huge lump.
So it's for the, yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
So.
Vote, aye, maybe?
Aye.
And aye, so that was on three.
Madam Chair, I'll move the school committee vote for favorable action on article four.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Treese, seconded by Ms. Mably, any discussion? Ready to vote?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye, and article five.
I'll move that the school committee recommend favorable action on article five.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Treese, seconded by Ms. Mably, any discussion? Ready to vote?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. Thank you for that. All right, new business, I will turn this over to our vice chair.
Oh, right, that's me. So, so obviously, we're waiting for the report that Dr. Gilligan has requested. But in the meantime, I've done some work with, I contacted our, actually, I should dial it back. So a couple of ways that we typically change policies, or look at our policies, are, happen in two ways. One is something comes up in the town, or something's happening, and we look at the policies that we have and see if there's anything we want to change. For instance, our discussions last year are all about the vaping. We looked at those policies, we made some changes. That was driven by our actions and our interests. Other ways is the Mass Association of School Committees sends out updates, that they do on a pretty regular basis on certain policies. Then we look at those, look at what they recommend, we see if we want to take what they recommended or other, and we vote on that. So those are the two ways we've typically done it. While we're waiting for the report that Dr. Gilligan requested, or contracted, I did contact the, our field services director for the Mass Association of School Committees, Dorothy Presser, and so she, I asked her what the state is looking at right now. And she said that she will look into it for me, but she's pretty sure that they are already looking at harassment and sexual harassment policies. As I look things up there, some of them are rather dated. She did not know when they were going to be finished with their recommendations, what they were with their lawyers right now. I expect to hear back from her soon, I was hoping by tonight, but she did not get back to me today. And in the meantime, I also gave Suzanne Egan, our town attorney, a list of policies to look at, and she is reviewing those, and will have a few to recommend after we have the report as well, and hopefully at the next meeting, if all that can come together. And so we'll go from there. And that's how that works.
So is the idea that we would select a couple each meeting?
Right, right. There are quite a few, I looked at pretty much anything that associated with, I have ones that were around non-discrimination, sexual harassment, guidelines, procedures, student-to-student harassment, bullying, student complaints grievances, student records, public's right to know, all these different areas, as well as actually a couple of policies that we've been holding off. We just reviewed them in spring of 2017, but after the whole gas crisis, the Columbia gas crisis, I thought it was, made sense to look at those two policies again as well, and see if there's anything we've learned in the last two years to see if we need any changes there. So Suzanne's looking at all of that, and we will put together what the state comes up with as well. We don't need to wait for them, but if they have something, we'd like to incorporate that. And we'll do a few at a time, and review them that way.
Great. Thank you for your work on that. I know that was a lot of work.
And actually, one other thing just to share, and this is something we can talk about when everybody else is here, other than the five members. There is, the Mass Association of School Committees is willing to host our policy meeting, which we have right now, and it's all very accessible and usable, but it is cumbersome. It's not all hot links, you have to go, you know, scroll back and move around and things like that. The Mass Association of School Committees will host that for a town. The, it's called Policy 21, and the initial fee to activate that they then kind of lay it all out is $3,500. And then, once they've done that, you have to pay an annual maintenance fee of $900 a year. I checked with Mr. Mealy, and as a school committee, we do not have a budget. So if we wanted to pursue that, we'd have to see, I'll look at some of the, some of the other towns in the state do use their service. I'm going to go and look at their online policy books, and see if it's that much easier because of this service. But I mean, everything, ours is accessible there, it's just you have to keep backing out, looking it up, you can't search on words, you can't, it's not as quick, so.
It's pretty expensive.
I, I think, the maintenance is, $3,500 is one thing, but the maintenance is, is a lot, so. And we don't have a budget, like I said.
So $3,500 is the initial?
That's the initial.
And then 900 a year?
A year, right. So, I mean, I think that's something we would want to talk about. But I'll do some more research on that in the meantime.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
No.
Do we have any public comment? All right, seeing none. Do you have any final comments? Ms. Mably?
Um, yes, I know the arts, Ms. Tonk has mentioned this, but I really want to thank the Youth Expo organizers. It was quite a great event on Saturday for our first time out. I don't know if any of you got to go to it, I saw your family there, David, but the youth center, the North Anna Re Merchants Association, and I know Sally Finnamore organized a youth expo, and it involved anyone from, actually, there was a third grader who was spectacular. He made rings out of crayons that you could color with as well. From third grade to 12th grade, and there were kids with dog walking businesses, babysitting, jewelry baking, vegan baking, pet portraits. So all these students had displays that people could come in and talk to them, buy their products, commission their services. It was really well done. I know Rick Gorman already said during the event, I've already got ideas for next year. They're very excited about it, and the community did a nice job coming out and bringing their kids to see it. And I really appreciated the merchants association, a couple of the people were there, and they went to each kid and talked about how they could expand their business and how they could change it, and really saw that, treated the kids as entrepreneurs. It was great. So I really appreciate the town collaboration that showed. And one other, this is just a personal note, but my, my mother-in-law passed away back in January, and she was quite a spectacular public servant, and she really displayed the raised values, I would say. She's not from Massachusetts, from Connecticut, but we're having our memorial service on Saturday, so I just wanted to mention that Judy was quite a fabulous woman. And she's very inspiring, and inspired me to be a public volunteer as well.
Sorry for your loss in the works, though.
Thank you.
And I will continue on the art theme tonight, and just say that I had the pleasure of going to Sargent's art show, my last one, actually. And Ms. Brady has completely changed that program there. It is fabulous, all the kids had their art framed.
Wow.
And you could buy it for a donation of $20, and walk out with your kid's art right there. And each grade, the level of talent that was present was beyond anything I've ever seen in that school before, and they all did something different, and it was just really, some of these, I mean, we were joking, could we buy someone, someone other kid's art? Because some of the pieces were very spectacular. So, very, good job, shout out to Sargent School, Ms. Brady, for that. All right, if there are no other comments, I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Mably, seconded by Mr. Treese, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. Good night.